Did you hear?
Our.
Yes.
No, I suppose.
I think that's a major question.
And then he. I'm stuck. I'm like.
To get.
Who?
Yeah, just I just missed the get like.
When they call me, do I just do?
I really look at the directory.
It's where you see the.
And keep it.
So I do.
I can't. Bring me the gas. Well, she's not all the regulation.
Oh, just text you safe. I know. That for sure.
Stand so.
Not really. If you had to.
You can all do so much with that. You're gonna.
It was whatever. It turned out better than I was. I was thinking it was gonna be like.
Like.
More as a phone.
It is a little bit.
Yeah, they're doing.
It's like a major.
Who's the chief?
Yeah.
Uh, well, he just.
The wine and coffee. But you know, I feel like.
It makes sense now.
You may be in my mind.
My space.
No, you're.
And actually, it's ten dollars. So.
That's right. Exactly. That's what my son's dream.
Come on.
What happened? Well, Bill's. Good. Really monetary.
Free stuff. Do that.
Yeah.
Got to wait for this. Last year.
I mean, I'd like.
Even in your position. Here in this. They give someone.
They said.
I'll show you later.
That's. I love you. Years ago. A kid that's all. He takes kids.
It's embarrassing now you're.
Too many.
Yeah. I would be taken. Cause why does it have like terrible?
Yes.
Yes. But. Do you? I was on the proper years. I was.
I'm gonna. That's.
Other thing. It's. Distributing is different over there. Oh. Dream brother.
Did you have one more?
How good?
And everything is always in hotel sex. So. Well. So. Street in the west. Not the same. It's been a while.
Obsessive.
Sketch. Yeah. And eight, two, grandy. How goes? Hopefully September.
You remember Kira, right?
Thank you.
This is our baby, you know?
No, I don't remember your baby. That's what I remember is this.
A bigger now.
To meet you.
Thanks to you too.
Wow. They do grow up.
Unfortunately, they do.
Weird. I've got a.
Why does that somebody?
Junior in high school. City administration.
Did I stop?
We're supporting this here. Same thing at barely.
Just text me.
The best six zero.
And you can go. It's. It's.
Man? Oh, busy, busy.
Haven't seen you for a while.
Yeah.
You're.
Yeah, thanks.
You're here for the travel.
My sons now.
There comes a time.
It's alright. It's nice to have you on the team. Introduce him. Or not. Earrings are ahead of me. Nice to be there. I hope that you want. There's no staff. One day, you know, like a month. They expire. Oh, really? There is. Better like. Yeah, I think it had been in the entrance.
I need to track this back. Video for.
You have a.
Did your first.
What you're doing?
Hi. Oh, Kate, it's nice to meet you.
Just need to.
Yes. Yes, that's great. Do you happen to put on the screen? Put on the screen or just shut it?
That sounds.
Or does she need to? Like? On the screen have a copy of it?
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. We'll we'll get going tonight with our city council meeting, January seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Welcome to two thousand twenty-five. Get used to writing or typing that on your documents. I've messed it up a couple of times already. Thank you for joining us in person and and online and wherever in the world you may be. We appreciate the public's involvement in years past and look forward to everyone being involved in in two thousand twenty-five to make it great in Spanish Fork. So thanks for being here. We'll get started like we always do in in our council meetings here with a prayer and motivational message. We've got Connie Sokel in the audience that Councilwoman Beck is not with us tonight, filling under the weather and and home watching, so we wish her all the best. But she assigned Connie or extended the invitation to have her give the motivational thought or prayer to our our audience tonight. And then Councilman Marshall will follow it up with a pledge. Connie, the floor is yours, please.
Thank you. I so appreciate this opportunity, especially as a community member, to be able to extend my gratitude to all of you and share a hopeful inspirational thought. I was, as soon as she shared that with me, the first word that came to mind was impact. The impact that you have had and the impact that you're going to have this coming year on us as individuals and as a community. And of course, that led me to a favorite story of mine that came to mind, which is the Keeper of the Spring. And if you're familiar with it, an older gentleman in the town kept the town spring sparkling and fresh and pure. The water that would come down from the mountains into the town shops and into the farm fields and into the homes. And then one year, the budget cuts extended to the Keeper of the Spring with the idea that maybe it wasn't as essential as they thought. And in time, the water got polluted and the crops failed and the animals died. And the council, seeing what was happening, took quick decisive action and said, let's reinstate the Keeper of the Spring, which they did, and he restored it to its life-giving status. So the beautiful moral of that story is just like the council that is before us. You are a wise and decisive council, and we have appreciated the decisions that you've made to make a community that we want to live in. And you have a new year before you. You have a lot of issues that this city grapples with that you know better than we do how many those are and what they are. And we know that you have the power and responsibility to make those decisive actions. So this year, we continue to invite you as you consider those issues. What is the impact? Who will impact and how? As individuals and families now and in the future. And we know that you have that responsibility, and we pray for you that you will be guided and uphold that. Just in closing, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you. This is a beautiful community, and we're blessed to be in a place that we can raise our families, that we create neighborhoods that care about each other, and you have made that possible. And I hope that you can see how wisely you govern and that you are the steady Spanish Fork Keepers of the Spring. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Do you want me to go ahead and offer the prayer? Thank you. Beloved Father in heaven, we come before thee gathered as a community, and we are so grateful to live in this blessed place. We're grateful for each of these council members. We know that they work tirelessly and so much of it is unseen and guessing that at times it is unappreciated. But we are so thankful for all that they do for the benefit of us and our families. We pray that thou will guide and bless them in their homes, in their families, in their professions, and in these endeavors, that they will feel and know the wise course of action to take and that they will feel energized and rejuvenated as they serve and that they will find joy and see the fruits of their labors. And we pray for these blessings, and we thank thee for sustaining us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Connie. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Please rise and join with me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We're gonna switch up C and D in our agenda to for a minute here. We're gonna go to D of employees of the third quarter, that we have some different employees of different departments that we'd like to come up and and be recognized. And then after that, we'll we'll go to the Women's Professional Rodeo Association recognition. Mr. Tyler Jacobson.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. If you had to guess what, how often you could win the Employee of the Quarter Award at Spanish Fork City? With three hundred full-time employees, three hundred benefited employees, and we have twelve Employees of the Quarter per year, you could win how often? You're really good at math, Shane. Once every twenty-five years. So this is a big deal. These employees that are here are are the best of the best. We had the opportunity to recognize them in front of their colleagues and surprise them with the Employee of the Quarter Award prior to this, so it's not a surprise to them. And we're just really grateful for the the wonderful commitment and effort that these these employees put in. So I won't tell you who they are. I'll let their their supervisors and directors introduce them. I will tell you which departments they're from. So our first Employee of the Quarter has worked at Spanish Fork City almost seventeen years. And he will be presented first by his supervisor, Brian Hayward, after which we'll have we'll have our one of our battalion chiefs that will be presented by Chief Hales and then from our Fire and EMS Department. And then from our Police Department, Chief Johnson will be introducing one of our sergeants. So with that, Brian, if you want to come up and present the Employee of the Quarter here.
Thank you. I'll have Jeremy Cole come up here. So Jeremy Cole has been, like he said, he's been with the city for almost seventeen years now as a programmer. And one of the main projects that he's been working on is the REC online system, and he's been making tweaks to it for as long as I remember, and I've been with the city for twelve years almost, so. But one of the the person who nominated was really appreciative of the things that he's done with that. He's he's gone in and and made some changes to where they can do online registrations, where you can also make reservations for pavilions and things like that through the REC online system. And the thing he's currently working on is modifying it to work for the REC Center, to handle the memberships for the new REC Center and things like that, to be able to track all of that. So there's Jeremy Cole.
Thank you. Am I supposed to say something?
Yes.
You do. Have to.
No, I I just I just do my job, and we have a good team that that helps make everything happen, so. I'm not any more deserving than anyone else, but so thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
So Mayor, where we've got the three, I'll say to Jeremy, don't leave. We're gonna do a picture, and we might have a few more things to say about you, but we'll do all three of them and then do that when we're done. Cause you were going, weren't you, Jeremy?
Mayor, Council, it's an honor to stand here tonight and recognize Battalion Chief Blake Edwards as the Employee of the Third Quarter. Chief Edwards is an amazing employee for us. He's been here a year and a half, just over a year and a half with us, comes of way of from West Jordan Fire Department, brought a lot of knowledge and experience, as you are all all aware of that. Even though he's a great employee, he's an even better father, always speaking highly of his kids and very proud of his family. Blake is the husband to Amber, his wife, who's behind us, and his mom is joining us tonight as well, Penny. And he's also the dad to Jackson, Easton, and Sadie, who aren't able to be here. They're running around crazy, I hear, so as any teenage kids would. The recognition that put Blake tonight on the stage was written by one of his peers, and they had this to say about him. Every time I've held an exercise or been on scene of an incident in the last month or two, Blake has fulfilled incident command or other major supportive role and has led by an example in such a great way. His leadership style makes people feel valued, listened to, and worthwhile. He works hard, makes sure you feel included. He has had a lot of work put on his shoulders, but has managed it very well, always does it with a smile. Not only that, but his day-to-day work exemplifies Spanish Fork's mission statement. He's a great addition to our Fire Department and to our city. Blake, congratulations. You're great. Thanks for making our city and department a better place.
Thank you.
Just want to say thank you. It's really easy to succeed when you have a good team, so I appreciate everybody. We have a good team. We have good stuff going on, so thank you, guys, for everything you do for us.
Thanks, Blake. Appreciate it.
While Matt, while Matt's coming up, it feels like this is Golden Globes-esque. We really should get some music, you know, get that going.
Who's gonna host? Who's gonna be the host?
Well, it's a privilege this evening to introduce Sergeant Zach Fossum as our Employee of the Quarter. Zach was promoted to Sergeant in July. He is one of our patrol sergeants. He does a phenomenal job. And one thing that really impresses me about Zach is his willingness to mentor and instruct others. Zach's been one of our field training officers before his promotion to Sergeant. And I've had the opportunity in sitting in some meetings with Zach that we've had some difficult conversations with some of our officers that have just been hired. And Zach, his biggest attribute is his communication skills, and he can say the things that need to be said, but he says those things in a way that is respectful, meaningful, and it makes people feel warm inside. And that's one of the things that he strives to do is be a friend, mentor. And we're very fortunate to have Zach as a member and a leader here at our department. Zach works day shift quite a bit. That's what he prefers. Once in a while, he does have to work graveyards, and when Zach's working graveyards, I have a, I can sleep at night because I know our community is well cared for. Our officers are looked over, they're mentored, and he just is a great employee. And Zach, I just want to congratulate you on this. You make our community a better and safer place.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. And words to awesome Fossum.
I guess we're supposed to say something after.
Yeah.
Man, I just want to say that when I had some of my friends that I had worked with, I worked for another agency, and they were like, hey, you need to come down to Spanish Fork, man. It's a great place. Spanish Fork employees are really happy, and man, I couldn't be happier that I made the move, man. The supportive council, the supportive city management and departmental management is awesome, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate it.
Okay, let's get the three of you up front in front of the council. We'll take a photo like that.
You too, Shane. What? It's a you too. Oh.
Right here in front of them. Try to center yourselves in front of the council. And stand an equal distance from each other. I care a lot about that. All right. Good.
You guys look great.
Here you go, guys.
Jeremy.
Thank you.
Put that, put that up on the wall instead of the college degree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Well deserved. Thank you. Thank you, Blake.
Well deserved. Maybe just a couple of added words, Mayor. These these are our three of of our best, and and I'm so happy always when we do these to to be able to say something like, and we do have a lot of others that are just like them. So it's fun to be able to recognize these employees. What's kind of cool, you heard, I think, Jeremy, seventeen years that you've been here and and Zach's six-ish and Blake a year and a half? And and so, you know, all of them continuing to contribute, whether they're new, not quite so new, and and in between. I love that, you know, and we've we've just got great employees, so it's fun to be able to recognize them. And we take, we do go and do something within each of their departments as well. And let's see, Blake, I think when we did, when we recognized you in your department, you got the most bubbles. We've got these bubble guns, guns, not gums, but firefighters like to throw bubbles, and they were exuberant in their use of the guns. And we tried to get a picture without bubbles, and I think they didn't stop. And I think we had to mop the floor that day. It was like, put up a sign, slippery, cause it was it was really wet, but it was pretty cool. But anyways, it's great to be able to recognize these employees.
Please enjoy me, join me, everyone, in giving these awesome employees of Spanish Fork City in these different departments another round of applause. Very deserved. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Chief, I don't know, Chief Hales, I don't know if you're gonna leave after this or not, and I don't know if it's on anybody's council comments or not, but do you want to give us? It's not every day that you're putting out fires on Main Street on commercial structures. Do you want to give us an update of that incident that happened this week or? I would like you to. If that's okay.
Should we rephrase the question?
Most people, I would say most people in Spanish Fork saw it, but because we have people that like to go up and down Main Street from neighboring communities, they saw it as well.
Yeah. I I'm staying, so, but this is a great time to highlight that incident. We were definitely on on the main stage of Main Street here in Spanish Fork. Fire Marshal Turner actually was driving through the area and saw white smoke and was like, that's not normal for Main Street. So he continued his drive, and as he looked over his shoulder, he saw flames coming out from the Lucky Five Restaurant here on Main Street, under the Mansard facade on the front. He then radioed in and asked for a fire response to come. Our our folks just down the street were very quick. He called it in. He actually went inside, got the Lucky Five Restaurant staff out, and then evacuated the building to the north of that as well, because we didn't know how advanced it was into the attic. Great work. You see our firefighters here on the the attic are on the the roof, preventing that fire from extending into the attic space. What an incredible stop they made in these types of structures, as those that know building construction know that a building of this age and the transfer of heat into that attic space, if it gets in the attic, it's usually pretty hard to stop at that one spot. And so we were able to stop that very quickly because of quick action and recognition. Our our team was there quickly, and within twelve hours, business was back operational. And so Lucky Five's back in business. They do have a board-up section in the front there to keep that facade from falling down until they can get it removed, but no injuries and everybody's good. So great to see it back in in business, and we didn't lose a sufficient part of our city.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your service and every day, but on that one that was very visible as well. Please join me in giving them a round of applause.
Did you, did you hear a new word there that he used? A Mansard roof? Like, I I had to Google what that was, and he used it correctly. Double check. What the heck is that? I thought maybe it was a name call or something, but.
Stuck with him.
First time ever.
Thank you for that update. Before we go to public comments, it looks like we're ready to to have Mr. Nick Hanks from Fairgrounds and and our rodeo director to be able to talk to us about an award.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I'm excited to be here on behalf of the Rodeo Committee. We just returned from the PRCA National Convention down in Las Vegas last month, where we were lucky enough to be singled out by the Women's Professional Rodeo Association as their twenty twenty-four Committee Partner of the Year. With over six hundred and fifty rodeos annually, to to be selected to receive that award is is pretty awesome. So we, the committee, all of us, were able to attend a luncheon where we were kind of the guests of honor and be brought up on the stage. And so it was really fun. It it's neat to see Spanish Fork recognized and kind of kind of cement our place in the rodeo industry, so it was pretty fun. We have a plaque that they gave us that I'm here to present to you.
So Nick, if if in the events of of the NFR that people just got done watching in December down there, the the those women are part of the Women's Professional Rodeo Association, and so for different reasons, they would recognize the Spanish Fork Fiesta Days. What are some of those reasons why they they think we're pretty cool?
You know what? Probably the biggest thing that I think we do and and that I hear from them is we we try to take exceptional care of all of our contestants, the the cowboys and the cowgirls. We we have stalls available with shavings, and and, you know, we try to feed them, really try to welcome them to town, but also their their horses. To those women, you know, most of them are barrel racers or breakaway ropers, and their their horse is probably more valuable to them than anything they have. And having nice stalls with plenty of shavings that are open and available is such a big thing to them, and we kind of pride ourselves on on having that for them. So I think that's probably the biggest reason we were selected to receive this award.
Seth was saying it was partly you getting that award for taking care of everything down there and and helping us put on a good rodeo. So thanks to you too, Nick. It's it's not lost on what's how it's run down there, so we appreciate you.
Well, thank you. It's definitely a a committee effort. It's it's no one person, that's for sure, so.
Well, if you'd join me in giving Nick and the Rodeo Committee a round of applause for this award, we'll get a picture.
Nick, come in. Hold it down there.
I guess you're taking a picture.
Dale's taking a picture, so.
We've got it.
If we're a hat, we're taking a picture.
If you took it off, we would take a picture.
All right.
Should we get Luke and and?
Thanks, guys.
Lanny up here?
Luke, anything you wanted to say?
Nothing you want to say.
Okay, not tonight.
No, thank you.
Next time. Next time.
Those kids are amazing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for those recognitions. Always good start to a council meeting to to talk about those and be able to recognize good, good people doing good things inside the city. Very, very cool stuff. Takes us to item four on our agenda, the public comment section. This is a general comments that any questions or comments that you'd like to ask the mayor and council, please do so at this time and try to keep your your comments to three minutes or around that if you could, so we can be respectful of everybody's time. But please come up if you'd like to address the mayor and council tonight. Well, I thought we were getting somebody.
Guys, the microphone's up here. It's not out there.
It's on the wrong way.
The wrong way. Come on. If they're on the clock, that's appropriate. Yeah, we don't want that.
One was gonna get up and say, I disagree with Chief Hales, but it didn't happen. Okay, no public comments. We'll move on to council comments. We'll start with Councilman Carden and move this way, and then end with Councilman Took, if that's okay. Councilman Carden?
Mayor, I don't have any comments tonight.
That was easy. Okay. Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Mayor. Also don't have anything tonight, but I do want to remind the community, community as being the council member that sits on the animal shelter board, to remind you, help control the pet population. Have your pets spayed or neutered. Goodbye, everybody. Thank you.
Good, Bob.
Thank you.
That's good.
Councilman Marcel.
How do I follow that? I just can't. Just one quick thing. So over the last, I don't know, six, eight months, UDOT has been looking into a new interchange down on Center Street in that area. They published their their draft document a month ago. Final comments were closed, or were supposed to be closed last week sometime, early this week, maybe. One of the things that they have recommended in there that has been sort of back and forth over the course of this time is the closing or opening or the leaving first out open. At one point, it was recommended to be closed. Now it's recommended to be open. At one point it was recommended to be closed. Now it's recommended to be open. From my perspective, the, as we sit, as we start talking about the potential of developing on the west side, whatever that development form takes, whether it stays farming or turns into something else. It's extremely important, in my opinion, that we continue to have crossings over I-15. Isolate in that west side because of a loss of a crossing, I think it would be detrimental to our community. And so what, what I was hoping that we could do, and we, we didn't formally comment on the document as a council, which, which is fine, but I would, I'd like to somehow formalize, if there is enough support, to recommend to UDOT that that stay open. I don't necessarily want to weigh in on a, on a, on an alternative yet, because it's, there's more work to be done. But in my opinion, that's critical to maintain that facility and I would, if, if the, if the rest of the council is so supportive, I'd like to do something.
So, thank you. And we actually had that on our tentative agenda for tonight, but both Corey and Jared are out of town. And so it would have been a one-sided conversation. You'd be the only one talking about it.
Perfect.
What Shane wants.
It's the right side.
Fair enough. So yeah, we'll have that on our January 21 agenda. We'll talk about it. And as far as staff is concerned as well, we, we would recommend some kind of formal position. They know what our position is, but you're not, you know, you don't want to leave that left unsaid anyways. So yeah, we'll have a discussion about that and prepare some documents for it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is the rest of the council comfortable with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Moving forward, okay.
Is that typically done as a whereas type?
Yeah, I think we could. Candidly, I think we just call it a resolution and, and just full on call it resolution, whatever, to, of support, something like that.
That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilman Took?
Thank you, Mayor. I have just two items this evening. And the first we have, we're lucky enough to have with us our President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, Kathleen Levitt. So I'd like to turn a little bit of time over to her first.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year. It's good to see you all. A few things this month coming up with the chamber. Our new networking this month is January 16th. Will be hosted at the Hampton Inn. It's going to be more of an open forum this time, learning where the chamber wants to go with their chamber this year, what they'd like to see, what they'd like to do. So it should be a really fun one of brainstorming and bonding. We've got a ribbon cutting on January 24th at 1:00 PM in Salem. It's Bybee and Co Realty. Also, big event this month, January 29th is the annual awards gala at Mavi Event Venue. That's at 6:30 PM. So hopefully, we were talking with Shelley earlier today, so hopefully you guys all are planning on that and have it in your calendars. We're super excited to see you working on final details for that. And on January 31st, Nothing Bunt Cakes is cutting their ribbon here in Spanish Fork. Something to note on that day, January 31st, 20% of all the proceeds from sales from Nothing Bunt Cakes is going to be donated to Tabitha's Way that day. So that should hopefully really help them with their expansion projects. So if you guys are thinking about buying bunt cakes, buy them all the time, but definitely buy them on January 31st.
Kathleen, remind me where their business is?
They are right next to the T-Mobile in that, I'll look it up real quick. Let's see. I can see it in my mind.
In kind of a handles area.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a teriyaki grill right there.
The reference. Next to the teriyaki grill.
I know, yours is as good as mine. Let me find the address.
No, by the dessert plate.
You get to J-Dogs, you went too far.
Yes, yes.
Turn around, come back. It backs on to fourth, what is that, fourth east? That's the road between Costco and there.
Yeah, it's right by the Costco. 407 East, 1000 North in Spanish Fork, right in that little, that little center. So we're excited to have them. The owners are really, really nice people. I'm excited for you guys all to meet them. They are jumping into this community and really, really working to make it as good as it can be. So excited for them.
I think my family believes it's their duty to make sure they stay in business.
Yes.
There's a bunt cake in our fridge every single day.
I bet. It's not a bad thing.
No, I'm not, yeah.
Delightful cakes.
What's super cool is they, they have some really good gluten-free options. And I don't, I'm not one that needs that, but I love that that's available because my friends that, that need gluten-free treats and they get the shaft all the time.
That's the number one comment that I receive when I say they're coming in, is their gluten-free options. I don't, I don't do gluten-free either, thankfully, but yeah, it seems to be hard pressed to find options for that that are also good. And they seem to do a good job. So excited for them. That's all I've got for you guys. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen, and looking forward to our meeting. We have a monthly board meeting this coming Thursday morning as well, which is always a fantastic experience. So thank you for all you're doing. And one more item for me this evening. So last night I was able to attend the monthly Parks and Recreation Committee meeting. And it was excellent, but we have three committee members whose terms are ending. We've got Lindsey Duval, Terry Menlove, and Doug Ford. We, they all have expressed interest in continuing their service. So incoming council meetings, we'll talk with Dell Robinson and others about moving forward. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Took. The only thing I have, was honored this morning to spend a little bit of time with our current Lieutenant Governor and just about to be inaugurated tomorrow into another term as Lieutenant Governor Deidre Henderson. If you don't know, maybe you live under a rock. You don't know she lives in Spanish Fork. She's a great member of our community and was, was in the area today, kind of traveling around South Utah County and Sand Peak County as well, doing some, some, some volunteer work. And so luckily we have kind of the best volunteer opportunity available, I think, in the state with Tabitha's Way. And her and her staff were, some of them, most of them was the first time in there. And of course Wendy sharing the story that she does about the food pantry and how vital and how important it is to our community was not lost on them. And so you should know from a Spanish Fork residents' view that Wendy certainly does us proud in representing the kindness, the generosity, and the neighborly love that we have as a community. And it was on full display for the state to see today. And they were very impressed. There was discussion of how to just make it better and, and serve more families in a, in a, in a full way through the pantry. So thankful to Pete from SFCN and everyone that got down there to be able to get some, some shots. And Lieutenant Governor Henderson's team as well for making a great morning, a great start to 2025. I, I did tell them that, and we get asked this periodically as, as elected officials, people reaching out, say, how can I help? What can I do? I want to give back to my community. I'm telling you, if you haven't taken advantage of this spot to give back to your community, it will make you a better person. So in 2025, if you get a minute, you, your family, your, your church group, your neighborhood, whatever it may be, if you want to make a dent in, in your community, a good dent, get, get in touch with us. We'll connect you with, with Wendy down at Tabitha's Way and, and you'll see some good things happening. And it'll really, in some ways, change your life for the better. So again, thankful to the Lieutenant Governor. Wish her the best in another term of leading our state. And, and we'll honor her at a later council meeting. I don't know Seth, and maybe somebody historically has this, is, is there been another governor or lieutenant governor from Spanish Fork? I always say it, tell her it's a big deal, and I think it is a big deal.
See what Google tells us. Give me five minutes.
All right. Get that into the search engine, but.
Can we go back to that picture? Did you bring your own apron? It's definitely not worked in.
Nobody tells me.
It's got a nice crease that just came out of the package.
Did you just iron it to take that picture?
Nobody tells me till after pictures that you tie it in front. You don't just tie it in back.
Worked in, worked in.
Do you have some other pictures of me actually working, maybe moving, not just posing for the political picture? I swear there was some lifting.
Whatever. It's your story.
And that apron didn't look that good at the end, okay? That was at the beginning of the thing.
That is no apron.
Yeah, then we removed it, so. Well, I, one more thing that about Tabitha's Way, they are expanding, which is very cool. I know they've involved Kathleen in the chamber and they'll, will cut a ribbon at some point, I'm sure, and celebrate this further. But where their pantry is currently at, talk about the reuse of facilities and things. But the old Hostess Building, the Twinkie Building, that used to be a safe way, way back when I was a kid and then was Jazzercise for a time and carpet place for, it's been a lot of things. But it's going to be back to a, a supermarket, really, but, but a market for, for the, the people that need it in our community. So they have secured that, that space and will be moving across the way, I think, in the, in the coming months, just getting it finalized. And be very, very cool to have better parking, better flow of, of traffic and everything for that area as well. I, I do appreciate the, the residents that live in that area. Some days, sometimes, those roads are backed up with people coming in to, to get meals. But it's, you know, they're understanding. After a while, people have just come to know what those people are in line for. And if you understand that, then we can, we show some pretty good grace of, of cars, you know, in a, in a roadway for a minute. So anyway, thanks again to the Lieutenant Governor and, and that event today. Great, great start to 2025. Okay, staff reports?
None tonight.
Nothing tonight. Any Lieutenant Governors in Spanish Fork?
So far the closest one is Springville, Governor Clyde.
Okay.
You might know that name.
Yep, okay.
Keep looking.
From Spanish Fork. Okay, anything else, Council, before we move on to the rest of the agenda? Okay, if not, we'll go to Spanish Fork 101. I think Mr. Dale Robinson is going to update us on the Festival of Lights.
Yeah, thank you. Is, oh, Jeremy left. Jeremy has kind of been a permanent fixture in our department for the last several years, writing a lot of these in-house programs and, and he did so with our advanced ticketing for Festival of Lights as well. And, and these aren't easy tasks, because they all have their own little, little twerks and things that, that, that have to be done to accommodate certain situations. And he's been a rock star for us and we, we appreciate Jeremy and I was glad to see that he got honored. Just a quick update on our Festival of Lights. This was the first year. It's our 32nd year and the first time that we've done anything like this with advanced ticketing. Our intent, if you've been in the Festival of Lights over the last 30 years, particularly the last two or three years, you'll know that there is a substantial wait time on certain days. And I know last year we got backed up clear to the fire station on more than one occasion. So we, we put this in place, which isn't new, but it's new to us. And wanted to hopefully distribute these, these cars more out better so that, so that we didn't have such a long wait time for people to come and go through. And overall, we had our issues, but I think overall it was a success. We had, we had the most cars that we've ever had, our new record of 1,079 cars in one night. A thousand is really about our max. Last year we had, we had 1,073 on one night. So three nights this year exceeded 1,000 cars. We didn't, we didn't go clear back to the fire station. You know, we did get up on Canyon Road a couple times. But for the most part, the flow of traffic was much better.
Dell, which three nights were those?
Those were the Saturday before Christmas and Christmas Eve and Christmas Eve-Eve.
Christmas Adam.
Christmas Adam, thank you.
Dell, do we know how many of those?
I didn't know if that was politically correct or not, so I didn't dare say it.
Over a thousand, those nights over a thousand, do you know how many, like percentage-wise, how many of those had pre-booked? Or was it a lot of?
Uh, we, we will have. One of the neat things about this is we're going to be able to collect some data, right? Which is really going to help us for next year, because we'll know all of these time slots and they were put in half-hour time slots. But we'll know how many, how many cars came through. We'll know how many were box office people, meaning they paid at the gate because they didn't have a ticket. And honestly, that's, that was probably our biggest challenge. But because we have people come from everywhere, it's difficult to get the word out to everybody. And there was signage, but on the nights that we were sold out, it was, it created some backlog. But we had, out of the, we had just under 19,000 or just under 20,000 cars this year. And we, we were five days less. This is the shortest year, because Thanksgiving fell on that, on one of those days where it shortens our season. And last year we had 22,000 cars and we had, we had just under 20,000 this year. And out of that, I think 4,000, almost 4,100 cars were box office cars that came in without a ticket. And we didn't really want to take a hard stance. It's the first year. It's a change. We're trying to, we're trying to be sensitive to people who didn't hear or didn't know. So if we could, we let those people in without hopefully jeopardizing the system itself, because we want to encourage people to go get tickets online. And they were able to, if they were in line, they were able to buy tickets while they were sitting in line for a time slot, if they were available. So we, we recognized early on that some of our challenges were people waiting in line for an hour and then, then getting to the, the ticket entry and realized they didn't have a ticket and that caused some, some issues. So we started placing people all the way along the line to talk to people. As they just got in the line to make sure, do you have a ticket? If we had, if we had open space available, they would tell them, here's your, here's your code. Go ahead and get on and get a ticket. If, if it was full, they would say, we're full tonight. I'm sorry, you need to come back another night. So they didn't have to sit there and wait for an hour to find out that information. So I think that was one of our, one of our, our biggest challenges was, was just, and, and some of the interpretation of the information that got out on social media was incorrect. That they, they thought that, hey, I've got a ticket now. I'm a VIP. I need to be in by this time. Because if my time slot was 6:00 to 6:30, I needed to be there at 6:00 and get in. That there was, there was two lines, so there's a VIP line. If you have a ticket, you. There was all kinds of crazy stuff on social media, interpretation of the information that was out there, which, which caused us some, some challenges. So the way we remedied that is we just took everybody that had signed up for a ticket. We immediately sent them out some, we send messages out to them every single night and said, here's your time slot. Thanks for buying a ticket. This ticket will get you in line to get through the Festival of Lights. So they didn't think they could just run to the head of the line, which causes some issues. So I think that, getting that information out was, was critical and helped us a lot. But this is going to really help us. They were shorter transaction times. We feel like even though it was a challenge, that it was, it was successful, because we still had a lot of cars get through there. I, I had people even call me and say, hey, is the Festival of Lights okay? There are just, there aren't as many cars. And they were concerned that we weren't doing very well, when in reality we had just distributed them over a larger range of, of, of ticket opportunities. So there's some tweaks we're going to make based on the data that we get, we got back. Next year, either we expand the times or, or just do some tweaking with some time slots. Maybe change some rates or something to drive people to the time slots that aren't used. Our later time slots are not filled hardly at all. We'll find out what those popular times are and make, make adjustments accordingly.
So we could either close earlier, you know, not, not that we've ever talked about doing that, but data tells us really clearly that, you know, that it's just not wanted then. We can close earlier or we can change the price. And I think you can get more than 1,000 cars in a night if you take more advantage of that nine to 10 o'clock hour, right?
Drop the price and get more cars.
Yeah, and you can certainly distribute the line out and change it. And I think if people look, want a cheaper option, then, then some of that time distribution can, could work. Dale and I have spent a lot of time thinking about it. He's spent a lot of time with his people out there looking at it. And, you know, if we could move the, if we could move the ticket booth along with the line, that would be ideal. So we're working on that. We think AI can help us.
Move a ticket booth?
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A.
AI can help with everything. So that's what we're, Tyler's working on it.
It's the Chick-fil-A method, is that what you're looking at?
Something, yeah. No, we, we don't know, but that, yeah.
So we, that's the neat thing, is we have data now that can help us, right? Make some adjustments and make it better for everybody. But a tremendous success nonetheless, even with the change, and change is hard. The people at the box office that paid there, they paid $5 more and they obviously didn't even blink at it. But that's not really our intent. We're not concerned about making more money. We're just trying to drive people to get within the system, which if they do, it makes it better for everybody. So overall, I, I think things went really well. What questions do you have?
Yeah, what feedback, if any?
Did you guys go through? I asked my Parks and Rec Committee last night, how many of you went through Festival of Lights? Tell me what your experience was. And so we are, we're interested in getting.
Christmas Eve, scan, boom, done. There was, it was luck.
What time slot were you in? Do you remember?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
No, I'm in bed at nine, so there's no way.
So it had to be early.
It was probably 8:39, honestly. Yeah, but it was, there was no one there.
No line? I mean, you're not?
Yeah, he's on one of the busy nights, so that's, that's good feedback.
That's fantastic.
It was good.
My, I was in bed waiting for Santa Claus at that point.
My kid loves it. It's tradition in our family and our kids love it, so no disappointments. Any, any feedback? I think this year, Dale, was the first year that he's, that they didn't allow people to loop back through at least one more time?
Oh, no.
Or has that been that way for a while now?
We, we started doing that a year or two ago.
Did you?
It just, we, it got so, so busy that we just, we couldn't, we couldn't allow it. And it, and it's difficult to have it in that narrow an area anyway. So we started off first, Councilman Euler, by, on the nights that we knew our numbers were huge, we would block it off and wouldn't allow them to turn around. And so we kind of just eased into it. But it's, it's, it's so busy right now, it would really backlog things if we didn't. And throw our numbers off. Right now, we know how many cars can fit in the park. And so all of our, all of our number, all of our data helps us set this up the way, helps, helps us set it up for success. But thanks for that feedback.
We were a little offended there was no snow on the ground when we went through. If you could.
Yeah. Well, and that's another success, right? Here we are banging on the door of our record with five last nights and we didn't have any snow. I mean, honestly, the snow makes a big difference for people, too. Those lights illuminate off of there and it makes it more dynamic. And, and so people will come two or three times, you know, if they have that. But, so yeah, that, if I was in control of the snow, I'd have had you some. Obviously, my channels of communication there aren't great.
Dale, can you share with us what the new additions this year were, the new light ads? I think there were five, right? If you don't know.
Yeah. Did your kids pick them out?
We only got one or two.
This has been a tradition in my family for many, many years. Even my grown, my grown kids now.
I can't think they're all new.
It's their favorite thing to come and say, which ones are they? Seth, did your kids pick them out?
Oh, yeah, they knew. I have a harder time.
Did you tell them ahead of time?
No, I don't know. I never ask. I, I like this, the mystery myself and I fail every year.
Picked out one at least.
Every year.
So who can tell us?
The owls.
I mean, I know now.
Not the candy cane machine?
No, my, yeah, that's like 10 years old.
That's a long time ago.
It's one of those you just keep inside, Kevin.
Not the dragon in the pond?
No, that's a really old one.
Dragon in the pond. Yeah, it was the kind of nature.
Yep, the lumberjack guy.
Nature scene, yeah.
The owls. There was a whole series of them right over there, about five pieces that were all right there together. Yep. Squirrels.
Squirrels.
Or jacks.
Nature.
Bears that were lumberjacks with squirrels and all kinds of fun stuff.
It's fun to know some of the history, like you've got Pete's dragon, right, that used to be in the pond. Sometimes you put it back in the pond, sometimes you have the whale in there. But, you know, you've got those ski jumpers and somebody might think, you know, what's that here for? But that was to celebrate back in '02 when we had the Olympics.
The Olympics, yeah.
Really having that history that just marches through time with, with those elements that we have there. And our people do a really good job keeping it alive, you know, keeping those, those pieces alive and coming up.
Yeah, they're not, some of them are very aged and, and Janice and her staff and Raphael and his staff, they're just outstanding. They do a lot of work on those pieces. And it's a lot of tedious handwork to keep those, keep those things up, that rope lighting and stuff up and running. But we've been able to do a pretty good job keeping most of our pieces alive. So we'll keep adding to them as long as we got room in the park.
Love it.
Okay, thank you.
Good to hear again. Appreciate it. Thank you, residents, too, for understanding a change and, and giving it a shot, giving it a go. It'll get to, get better as, as years go by.
We had that one resident that was in our council meeting a month ago. She was sitting in here and we were talking about Festival of Lights and she expressed some, some potential worries and historical concerns. I'd love it. And I can't find her email, but if she's watching, you know, shoot us a note. Tell us how it went, because we were hoping to solve some of the concerns that she was expressing. And based on what we saw, we think we did, at least for more of the nights than in the past.
And she was from up in that neighborhood, close by.
Yeah, up the hill a little bit. So she, she would have been impacted, you know, when, when we got up the hill. But, yeah. I think we were successful, maybe not every night, but, you know, if we had 10 nights that were bad last year, I think we had three or four.
Yeah. Good invitation. Give us feedback. That's how we get better. Let's, let's, let's improve it and, and we'll, we'll do better every year like we have done. Okay, if nothing else after that, we'll, we'll move to consent items. And the only consent item is minutes from the last meeting. Any questions about that? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
I move to approve the consent items.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to new business tonight. We've got A through E. The first one is the Food Insecurity Initiative Resolution. I think we have a guest. Thanks for hanging out with us. Tyler, you want to introduce our guest here to go over this?
You can come on up. Yeah, we're grateful to have our Miss South Valley teen with us tonight, Kira Olson. Kira goes to Spanish Fork High School and is a junior there. And she loves to dance and cheer. And she is passionate about giving back to her community through her involvement in her community service initiative, Feeding Futures. So with that, Kira will have you present your resolution.
Yeah.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So as Tyler said, I'm Kira Olson. My Miss South Valley's teen title is within the Miss Utah's teen organization. And last June, I attended a town hall meeting addressing food insecurity hosted by Representative Tyler Clancy. At this town hall meeting, I learned two facts that absolutely stunned me. One, and six children in Utah have no idea where their next meal is coming from. And in 2023, Utah was the number one state in malnutrition amongst seniors. We want to be number one in a lot of things, but malnutrition is not one of them. After learning these facts, I knew I truly wanted to make a difference. For about two years after COVID, the Nebo School District was grant, given a grant to provide free school lunches for all of its students. Representative Clancy, last legislative session, hoped to pass a bill that continued this grant. However, it never made the floor. Now, families must apply and qualify to receive these reduced and free lunches. Representative Clancy is now offering a resolution asking city councils to support, to support healthy school meals for all. After learning of this resolution, I approached, approached Councilman Took with it. This resolution is the goal and the best solution to help our students reach their full potential. So as a council, I hope to challenge you all to support this resolution and help our students learn and succeed in the best way possible. Okay. Whereas, food insecurity and childhood hunger are significant issues affecting the health and well-being of children and families in our community. Whereas, proper nutrition is essential for children's physical, cognitive, and social development, as well as their overall academic performance and success. Whereas, advocates, educators, and other health organizations have emphasized the critical role of healthy eating in preventing chronic diseases such as obesity, heart disease, and diabetes. Whereas, providing healthy school meals for all children, regardless of income, can help alleviate food insecurity, reduce stigma associated with free or reduced-priced meals, and ensure that every child has access to nutritious food during the school day. Whereas, state-level legislation, such as the Healthy School Meals for All program, aims to provide funding and support to make nutritious meals available to all students. Thereby, promoting equity, improving health outcomes, and enhancing academic performance. And whereas, investing in the health and nutrition of our children is an investment in the future prosperity and well-being of our community and state. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Spanish Fork City Council as follows. Declaration of Support. The Spanish Fork City Council strongly supports the Utah Legislature's evaluation and consideration of legislation for healthy school meals for all. The Spanish Fork City Council urges our state legislators to consider this critical legislation and take its implementation. The Spanish Fork City Council will collaborate with local school districts, community organizations, and other stakeholders to support the successful implementation of any adopted legislation regarding the Healthy School Meals for All program, helping our children and our community have access to the nutritious meals they need to thrive.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kira. Any questions for Kira on this?
I, I have one. Kira, you're so well spoken. It's great to hear from you and have you here and to make it this far with this amazing platform with food insecurity. I just had one question. What, why is this important to you? Why did you decide to, to make food insecurity for Utah schools your platform? Why, why is it meaningful and special to you?
This is an issue I've never had to struggle with. So going to this town hall meeting and learning these flat, these facts was absolutely heartbreaking to me. And thinking back on it, I know that so many of my peers and my high school and everything are facing this issue. So I'm passionate about it. And since I'm in a, in a position to help them, I wanted to.
Awesome.
Do you know what the, the financial obligation of this would be at the legislature? Do you have any idea what the bill?
It's expensive. The funds are hard to find. I know currently, Nebo School District's unpaid lunch balance is over $100,000.
It's, it is difficult to find. I, I get that. It's, I, I think the mayor and I, we've talked about tax cuts over the last several years that amount to very small dollars in terms of the actual taxpayer, but large sums of money that, that legislature touts is, we gave you $150 million tax cut. A small portion of that can go to this and fund this fully. It just, I appreciate your passion with this. This is something that just, it's shocking that in this day and age that we have this issue, when for five bucks a year extra taxes, we could take care of this thing. So I appreciate the passion. This is awesome. Thank you very much.
So Kira is, is it, Kira, did I get that right?
Yes.
So what's the next step as far as legislation? I can't remember the legislator that, that was working on this. Clancy?
Clancy, yes.
Is he planning to, to bring it up and try and get it on the floor again, this upcoming legislation?
So he is proposing again with a few changes. As Healthy School Meals for All didn't pass, didn't go over well with legislators, he is taking it step by step. So this year, he is promoting to cancel out the reduced part of the meals. So everyone is either paid or free.
Yeah, I, I appreciate your passion in bringing this to us on a local level. I think, I think Representative Clancy is, is probably seeing something that if, if you have problems that are in communities like this, then maybe start at the communities and, and bring it closer to the boots on the ground and then bring the issue up to the legislature and ask them to report on their individual communities and those same statistics. And then they'll start paying a little bit better attention to it. Piggyback on what Shane said there, our, you know, different levels of politics can say one thing about this is how much we cut your taxes and no one fills that tax cut. And then you start to do the math of what that money could really go and, and accomplish. And it could, could help kids not go hungry in the, in the school year and, and different important things. I, I saw something the other day that said, and maybe take this into account, I don't want to discourage anybody from paying for the person's coffee behind them in the Starbucks line, but they, they said, hey, the, the person behind you is already in line and can probably pay for their coffee. So why don't you take that, what is it now, like eight bucks for, you know, something like that? Why don't you take that eight bucks, go down to your local school and tell them you want to, you want to pay the negative lunch balance of, of a kid? And that's probably going a lot further away than, than somebody's cup of coffee that they can already pay for in the line behind you.
Absolutely. The Child Nutrition Department at the school district, I had the opportunity to meet with Ryan Kay and Dallas Curl this morning from that department. And they said that they will never turn away a donation, especially at a hun, over $100,000 a year halfway through the year.
Yeah.
I think Representative Clancy's bill has been numbered. It'll be HB 100. But that means it is the language for it's been released and, and so that's how it gets tracked. The legislative session starts, I think, in two weeks. And so, you know, you can follow that. It'll be known as House Bill 100. And as Kira mentioned, in the language, it's actually a wonderfully short bill, so that's nice. But it does, at this moment, the language says if somebody's an eligible student is defined as qualifying for free or reduced meals, that this would say that they get it at no cost. So like she said, there's no more reduced, it's just one or the other.
Yeah, it looks like he's also tried to make some budgetary requests. I don't know if those went through or not, because I, this article that I found doesn't say that, but he's definitely taking it step by step like she's talking about. So this is a step in the right direction. Is it the final destination? Probably not. But I think this is a great first step to getting something done.
Yeah, these bills always have a harder time because they tend to have fiscal notes, like you're saying. So they, they do require efforts, anything. You might reach out to Representative Clancy and perhaps even in our, I don't know exactly where you live. I think yours would be Jefferson Burton on the House side, and then perhaps Senator Mckell. It might be good if we, we could probably get you in contact with them. And on the days when, when that's being discussed, they could look at having you either Representative Clancy or them having you there be a part of that discussion. That might be really educational for you and, and it might be helpful for them as they talk about that issue. But we can put you in contact with them if you're interested.
Yes, please.
I think this resolution is written in a way that, that I think spells out what our goal would be from, from our city's side. I don't know if, if the council feels any different about our ability to, to sign this resolution, but, but I'm inclined to, to accept this resolution and put a signature on it and help further the, the debate and the discussion up at the state level.
Absolutely.
I think getting it to the floor is the key, right? Let's have some, let's have some conversation behind it.
And I might second that, that next time we have a resolution that long to read, I'm going to invite you here to read it.
Please, please do. Because if it's between the two of you.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
So Arbor Day, have her come and read that.
Yes, you're coming back on Arbor Day, yes. Kira, thank you. Very impressive. Appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions for us?
I don't believe so. Thank you all so much for supporting this resolution. I know everybody at the school district is very grateful for your support to all of their schools. Thank you all so much. Have a nice night.
Thank you for representing South Utah County so well. We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, I would entertain a motion for Item A.
I move too.
Oh, go for it.
Sorry, Jackson.
Nope, go.
Okay. Yes, I will go ahead and move that this resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Took, seconded by Councilman Marshall. A roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Thank you. We'll get you in touch with those other legislators. Appreciate it. Okay, takes us to Item B tonight. Agreement for Professional Services Related to First Responders and Spanish Fork City Public Safety.
Mayor, Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak on this. This is an agreement for professional services related to first responders first and Spanish Fork Public Safety. As some may know, my story with first responder mental health, I'm very open about that and sharing as those that aren't aware of that, but I know some of you are. And mental, first responder mental health is a, a big thing for me, or I wouldn't be standing here today before you in a position that I am in, had it not been for those that understood first responders to, to be able to allow me to process the things that have happened throughout my career. This agreement is something that we've looked over, my staff's looked over, with about four different entities that provide these types of services to first responders and cities. This is another option to EAP, which our city already participates in with an EAP program. Having experienced from my own personal experiences, EAP doesn't necessarily always work for first responders. And so to have a specific first responder mental health provider that understands what we do and the things that we see and how to process that using different modalities that EAP may not offer, such as ART or EMDR, therapy modality. therapy modalities is very critical. And to be able to have this as a resource to our first responders if EAP doesn't work for them, to be able to have a place to send them to is a, a good resource. So in state bill fifty-three twenty-one one oh two that was put into place July one of twenty-four, it indicates that every first response agency within the state has to provide or make available mental health resources to first responders, the spouse and children of first responders, surviving spouses of first responders, retired or separated first responders for at least three years from the date that they retire or separate from the responding entity. Spouses or retired or separated first responders for at least three years from the date and access by all first responders and their families to mental health resources. And so not all of these, not all things are captured in EAP. And so to have some sort of another option as well, this, this provider provides that at an à la carte menu type service. So it's not something that we pay annually like we would for EAP. This is just as we use it, a resource. So if we need to send someone to a therapist, then we would only pay for the amount of time that they go to that therapist. About a year and a half ago, we, as a fire and EMS agency, were awarded a mental health grant from the Department of Public Safety of twenty-five thousand dollars. And so that goes towards us helping have money available to put forth to these types of services to pay for our first responders that may need it. And so far to date, we've, we've used some of that, but we haven't used very much of it. So we still have quite of unavailable amount of money to utilize. So there is no financial impact. Currently, we would utilize those twenty-five thousand dollars that were awarded to us in the event we do need to send a first responder to this. This is also an option for our police officers as well in the city to utilize as well. So highly recommend it. I think it's a great service. There's over fifty therapists on this team. They can be in-person status or where you go in and into an office and sit before them, or you can do telehealth. So very accessible. They're available twenty-four seven. So knowing that we do job twenty-four seven, three sixty-five as well, they also support us and are there to support us if ever needed. They also provide training for peer support, which is another part of that legislative action that was put in place in July that we have peer support providers within our own organization. Currently today, we have three of those peer support members. And they, they also provide training. And our hope is to send about five more employees through that peer support, which is also can be funded through that DPS grant that we, we received as well. So highly recommend this. We had Vaughn look at it. HR has looked at it as well, and they feel comfortable with this action to be moved forward to you tonight to approve. Are there any questions?
Pardon?
Go.
We don't expect, because of the way it's set up, we don't expect a lot of money to be expended because it's not a contract where you're paying ahead of time, but it's on the, on the use. The grant is in our fund balance. So if we end up using a lot, we would, we would adjust the budget, but the funds are sitting there in the, in the fund balance unspent. I don't anticipate that'll be a need because I don't think, I don't think it'll be used that heavily in terms of, you know, the bills. But if it's needed, I love that it's available. So it should be, it shouldn't have any impact on the budget.
First responders see some of the, some people on their worst of days. And so it's good to have something there so that they can talk through some of those situations because only first responders and those in those type of, that line of service really know how to deal with those situations. So I'm glad that we have something in place for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, we hear about those. Chief, both Chief Johnson and Chief Ailes keep us up to date as a, as a council on incidences that, that happen that, that are, you know, pretty dramatic inside our community and I'll tell you, every time that, that part of our group meet dings, it makes me sure nervous. And then I think about you, you guys and girls that are driving to and from that. And I think, oh man, if I'm feeling this nervous about that, how do you guys feel? And so thanks for being pros. Thank you for that good work you do. It takes a special person. And, and Chief, thank you for sharing your story about this too, of how important this service is. And, and I couldn't agree more. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we ask a lot. The community asks a lot of our first responders. And it's just a simple, easy way of saying we have your back. So this to me is a no brainer for us.
Very good. Okay, if there's no more questions about that, I'd entertain a, a motion for item B.
I move to approve the agreement for professional services related to first responders and Spanish Fork City Public Safety.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Carden. Roll call vote here. Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item B is approved. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Takes us to see the reappointment of some library board members. That's it? Not the, not the rest of the meeting, guys? We're done?
I thought they were getting up to talk about library board members.
Dale, is this falling under you for library board members or who's gonna?
Yeah, we've got the names there.
They're not here under my computer that doesn't connect to the internet in this.
I can, if you want me to, I can share some information there. Oh, you got it.
Oh, thank you.
Jack's got it up there.
Who's our library? All right, Councilman Took. Do you want to comment on any of these library board members? Is there three of them up there or just these two? So these two? I would say we've, we've got Ms. South Utah Valley. If you'd like her to come up and read this, she did her well. Or if you want to go ahead and do it. I don't have it in front of my screen here, but if you'd like.
I'm happy to read them. Would you like me to read there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I don't know that we intended that to be necessarily always public, but, I mean, you're give it a shot. Somebody can pause and read it themselves. So sorry, Ben or Angie, if you didn't want it.
All right, yeah. I, I get to serve with these, these fine folks on the library board. And this year I've, I've enjoyed getting to know these two particularly. And they're, and they're just great, great individuals who love the city and they love the library. So I'll just read a little bit about each one. So Ben Sampson's lived here in Spanish Fork for ten years. This wife has three daughters. He's been a strong supporter of the arts and education. Actor, director, and educator. Over twenty-five years of experience in film and theater, fifteen years of experience in education, K through twelve, and in university as well. Also an advocate working with people with developmental disabilities. He's worked for the past eight years. He's a drama integration coach with NIBO School District, helps helping teachers integrate drama strategies throughout math, science, and social studies, language arts, and social emotional learning curriculum. Ben also grew up in small towns, Minnesota, Wisconsin. He's just a big fan of the library. He's very knowledgeable about it, I just would like to add. But yeah, he's, he's here a lot. He's got a goes on to say here, Ben has been reading chapter books and book series with his daughters since his twenty-year-old daughter was three. So yeah, he believes that libraries are not just information or entertainment centers, but that they are part of the vital heart of a community because they bring people together to lift up and light up the world with dreams, ideas, learning, and limitless possibilities. And, and I can confirm, he brings his daughters to the library often to foster them the same, same excitement and drive. And then with Angie, she's lived here in Spanish Fork for seventeen years. Again, a long, long time resident of our city, has three children. You can see their ages there. She's a frequent patron of the library and participates and volunteers at various programs each year. She is always and everything, supporting it with what we do. And it's just such, so appreciated. In addition, Angie has always volunteered in other capacities here in Spanish Fork, including a couple of things, helping plant flowers along Main Street, Tabitha's Way, Wings and Wheels, and Scarecrows on Main Street. And I was with her when we graduated together and a couple here on the stand for Spanish Fork University in two thousand twenty-one, a couple of years ago. Angie served on the library board since last year, two thousand twenty-four. And it is true that she has been an excellent addition to it. Again, just both amazing individuals and I love getting to work with them.
Very good. Seem like exceptional individuals. If there's, if there's no other questions about them, they're not here, I don't think. I'd entertain a motion to, for the mayor to, to reappoint those library board members.
I move that these two individuals be reappointed on the library board.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Marshall. A roll call vote here. Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, board members. Yes?
Can I interrupt for just a second? As Kira was up here presenting, it would probably be really helpful. She'd like a picture with you.
Yes. My thought was, can we, do you have a document, Tara, that we could sign that resolution? And maybe she could hold it up while she gets a picture? Is that okay to do that now? Want to do that? Is that a good picture, Kira?
Only if Kevin's in it. Both Kevins.
Come on up, Kevin.
He might ruin the picture. I mean, come on. That way, if she wants to go, she can maybe, you gotta get a picture of him signing it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Well, I didn't know that either. I was.
Okay, so just a little over a month away. Getting ready, feeling ready to go. Yeah.
Stand right up there in front with that. And we'll stand behind you. Jack will get a picture. And then hand that to Tara after, so it can get official.
I have every time.
Council, can we see it this way a little bit?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good luck, Kira. You'll do amazing. Be yourself.
Let's give Ms. South Utah Valley a round of applause. Okay, takes us to item D of the agenda, a rodeo committee member. I don't know if, Dale, if you want to comment at all on Mr. Mark Binks, you'd be able to serve with him probably a time or two at the, with the rodeo committee, but.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to. I thought I sent a bio through, but I don't know.
I got it right here.
Okay, you got it. Okay. Just wanted to make sure it made its way through. Yeah, Mark, Mark's a lifelong resident of Spanish Fork. He's, he's been a member of the riding club. He's now an honorary member, but he's been a member since nineteen eighty-six. And Mark has served in many different capacities within the riding club, on the board, including terms as several terms as president of that club, which means he would have been serving on the rodeo committee at that time. Mark's most famously known for his cooking. He plays an integral part in the hospitality. Nick mentioned part of the reason we received that award was because of the excellent hospitality that we provide. Mark is certainly one of those guys that you'll see him cooking breakfast, lunch, and dinner nonstop for those five days. So he, he's certainly helped us. Personally, Mark's, Mark worked in law enforcement for a lot of years for the Utah County Sheriff's Department. At one point, he was the manager of the food services at the jail. I don't know if that's for against his chances here, but he fed people anyway, which is what he's doing now. He's now the athletic director at Springville High School. I know he's been working over there for, for the last several years, so.
Shouldn't that disqualify him?
Well, yeah, I was questioning whether I should say that or not.
Yeah, that's not a good bio.
At least it's not pacing right. Is this, this is a public meeting, huh? Shane, you and I could get fired right now, tonight.
For one of us, that's true.
For those of you that don't know, he's married to Deanne Barney, who was the former mayor Barney's daughter. So they got pretty deep roots in Spanish Fork. So want to present Mark as a potential member of the, of yesterday's rodeo committee.
Thank you, Dale. We, we had a meeting last night with, with the Diamond Fork Riding Club and, and we mentioned Mark there. And, and most of the riding club didn't know he was being, gonna be on that committee. So it was kind of an announcement that was pretty fun to see some faces. But he's been on it before and good man. And, and I think most of us know Mark, but yeah, yep. Good reason, like Dale said, of, of why we're, why we're a good rodeo and the hospitality is top notch there. So I would put forth Mark as an appointment to, to the rodeo committee for the yesterday's rodeo and entertain that motion.
I move to accept the appointment of Mark to the rodeo committee.
Motion made by Councilman Marshall.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate your willingness to serve. Item D is approved. Takes us to E, Personnel Policy Updates Resolution. Mr. Tyler Jacobson.
Tyler's been waiting all night for this.
As have we.
A few months, a few months, actually. We finally got everything, all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. So there are a few policy revisions that we're recommending as staff. The Personnel Committee has reviewed these changes and is supportive of, of those. Some of the main revisions are, are cell phone policy for employees. For a time, we required certain departments to be on the city's cell phone plan. And this change would make it possible for them to go onto a stipend. It would also reduce the administrative work that comes along with the city being the ones to provide cell phones for employees. So the way that the policy is written, after February first, any new employee that started with the city that a department director deemed needed a cell phone stipend, or needed a cell phone for their position, would be given a cell phone stipend. Those employees that are currently on the city's plan would be able to remain on the plan until, until they choose to, to go off and receive a stipend. So this will provide flexibility for a lot of our employees that they haven't had before and being able to choose their own cell phone plan. And it'll also free up some time administratively for, for our finance department who's been managing those cell phones. Any questions on that specific policy?
Welcome to twenty twenty something.
Say that again?
I think you might be the only organization left in the world that provides cell phones to their employees like that.
It's a big day.
It is a big day.
This is ground, well, not groundbreaking.
The department that I worked for changed this for a while ago, so.
Okay.
Administratively, it's just such a burden, so.
Right. Some of the other revisions, we've got the Family Medical Leave Act. In regards to that, we're really just making sure that we stay in compliance with the way that that federal law is written. So there's some minor changes there. We renamed our accident review meetings to incident review meetings. This is a risk management decision. And that was recommended actually by Utah Risk Management Agency that we belong to. We clarified some information on a definition within our inter-employee dating to make it easier to understand. And then also we've added two new sections. One of those is the cybersecurity and data protection section. And that has been put into place to better protect the city's assets and also people's personal information. There's also some new Utah laws that we have to abide by, and this will help us to be successful in that. And then the other new section is generative AI. A lot of you have probably used generative AI if you're using ChatGPT or Google Gemini and some of these other new AI solutions that are out there. What this policy does is it requires our employees to abide by certain rules when putting information into, into those platforms. So the free versions, typically the owner of that information is the company that provides the service. So ChatGPT or Google. The paid versions, we would have control over that information. We would be the owners of that information. And so we're putting some policies in place that if we're going to use those systems, that we use them responsibly. And in a way that will protect the content that, that is out there. And then just one other one to highlight with, let's see, Chief is gone. Chief Hales, with all the changes that have happened in his department, we used to have volunteer firefighters. We've now transitioned to all either. with all the changes that have happened in his department, we used to have volunteer firefighters. We've now transitioned to all either part-time or full-time firefighters, and there was a section for volunteer firefighters that were just completely removing those parts of the, the policy. And then there's some other general cleanup items as well. Any questions on what's, what's before you there? Okay.
No, that looked good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks, Tyler.
Appreciate the explanations. Okay, if there's no questions for staff on personnel policy updates, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I move to approve the personnel policy updates resolution.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, a roll call vote here, Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is approved. Takes us to our discussion item tonight. The County Homeless Initiative.
Thank you, Mayor. On the, this discussion item, we received a request from Utah County to approve, or at least consider a resolution to provide some additional resources, financial resources, for the Utah County homelessness winter plan. Mayor, I know you've been involved in some of these meetings, so you certainly can add any color to what I talk about. First of all, Utah County, and not, when I say Utah County, in this sense, not Utah County, the body politic, but Utah County, our entire county, has been required by state law to provide a warming shelter during these cold winter months. And we were a year or two behind Salt Lake County, both Utah County and Davis Counties. And wonderfully, we were allowed to develop our own plan at some point in the process, a year or two ago. The state was originally saying, you have to do it this way, and, and our county, members of our county, including from Utah County, Provo, Warham, and, and other cities, were really persuasive in getting the state to allow us to deliver, rather create our own plan. And Utah County leaders said, we, we want to try to do it our own way, not whatever way somebody else did. Not that it failed, not that it's not right, but we'd really like to do the Utah County way. And so we were able to develop our own plan. There are some additional laws that require us to have some, what are called code blue enhancements to our plan. A code blue day or night is, is a, a time where it's eighteen degrees or, or colder for a two-hour period. In our county, the county government, I know Commissioner Gordon was significantly, significantly involved in this. The county government was heavily involved. Many cities, I don't know if there are any of note you want to mention, Mayor, in some of the, like, like I said, you were involved too. But probably most importantly, a lot of nonprofit organizations were involved. And in the end, that's really what has created our plan and, and made it fairly cost-effective as it relates to other, other plans. Jack, will you advance for me? I don't see any way up here. Thanks. So in Utah County, there are three warming centers, but really, there's one. There's one open a night, and the locations of the warming centers change according to the schedule that you see here. The first location, all three are in Provo. One's at a place called the Genesis Project. Chief Johnson and I actually visited, visited this location in East Bay. You get to maybe the Les Schwab, and I think the Village Inn, hang a, hang a right there, a block or two east, and, and you get to what's called the Genesis Project. Up on State Street, between Provo and Springville, what's commonly called the Utah County Red Building, I think because it's red on the outside. They converted that to a place that could be used this year as a warming center, and then a church, the Provo Seventh-day Adventist Church Facility. And as you can see on the screen there, those are the nights where those, each of those facilities, respective facilities, are open and used. I think it's pretty cool that the Seventh-day Adventist Church makes their space available on Thursday evenings for those that are experiencing homelessness. So Utah County has asked, first of all, they, they have spent some money, and most of this is their money. There, there are some state funds that are made available, but they don't typically cover all of the costs. So Utah County spent at least two hundred thousand dollars to retrofit their facilities, their red building, and, and provide some, some enhancements to the other buildings. So Utah County has asked for cities to contribute an additional amount, and they suggested a hundred dollars per thousand resident population. So for Spanish Fork City, five thousand dollars to help offset some of those capital expenses and to help with some operating expenses. I think it's important to note, just because it is a real, a real cost that Spanish Fork City does incur, that we do by state law contribute from our sales tax revenue, some amount every month. We simply don't get it. The state withholds that amount. It's a percentage that they, they take from our sales tax revenue. In calendar year twenty-four, you can see there that we, we contributed, or, or rather, they withheld from our typical sales tax distributions, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to go to fund homelessness efforts across the state. Twenty twenty-three, for reference, we were a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Every city has this. Some amount is, is withheld. Of course, the more sales tax you generate, the more you'll contribute because it is a percentage. These dollars that we contribute by state law, those are managed by the state to offset costs. Some of those would go to Utah County, but not, it's not dollar for dollar. Those cities that have shelters within their communities, say in Salt Lake, they've got a shelter there, perhaps in, in other cities. If they have costs that they deem associated with, with homelessness, maybe it's enhanced police services or something like that, they can apply for reimbursement from the state, and they typically get refunded through these dollars, some small fraction of, you know, cents on the dollar, if you will. Maybe it's fifteen, twenty cents on the dollar. It's certainly not a one-for-one on those expenses, but. Utah County would receive some of those dollars, but as I mentioned earlier, they do not receive all of that back. So they're asking for us cities to contribute a little bit more. So their ask with this resolution would be that we, we contribute about five thousand dollars. As I was visiting with Commissioner Gordon about this, he did ask that I maybe highlight a couple of additional things that, that we as a community can help with as it relates to homelessness. Volunteers are needed to staff these centers through the night. They are not staffed by paid people, which helps to keep the costs down. They have four people per shift. The centers open up at nine and close at eight, and so their first shift starts, if you'll jump to the next slide, Jack. The first shift starts at eight thirty, so you can have some training. There's a half an hour overlap. But shifts go from eight thirty to one, twelve thirty to five AM, and four thirty AM to eight thirty AM. And like I said, the shelters themselves are open for those that need it from roughly nine PM to eight AM in the morning. As I mentioned, Chief Johnson and I went to one of these facilities, and I think that night, they said it was a hundred percent occupied, right? They have, can't remember exactly. I want to say like eighty? Shuts them at eighty, shuts them down at eighty. They provide, well, I'll tell you that in a second. So if anybody's interested in volunteering, pause the screen, pause it right now, take a, take a QR shot of, of what's on the screen right now to this, this link. You can go in and, and sign up for a shift. You can see right now the shifts that they have and, and how many they need. You know, on this particular shift, all four slots are taken, but only two of four, or three of four are taken, or, or zero of four. So if you have some time and you want to volunteer there, they would love that. And then finally, maybe most, most people could help in this way as well. The, the warming centers need blankets and winter clothing that they can give to individuals as they go back outside during the day. Blankets and gloves and hats, like I show here. They always need some hygiene products, and then packaged foods. They've given us an Amazon wishlist, so I think if you, well, if you, if this QR code on the screen will take you to their Just Serve page that they've created, where all of this information is there. A great activity for some youth group, a neighborhood, or, or any, any individual would be to go on this page, this JustServe.org page, identify what, what could they help gather? And maybe they go door to door, circulate something in their neighborhood, and looking for blankets, and take them down there. They are always looking for blankets. I think generally speaking, if somebody comes in, they might walk out with one blanket, and so they're doing their best to make sure that people have, have some warmth. That's the, that's all of the information that I have. I think the reason I wanted it on as a discussion item is, we've never talked about this. This is a, this is a, an expense that they're asking us to incur. Wanted to give you a chance to deliberate, discuss it, and then if you're interested in, in having this interlocal be approved, we can put it on next council meeting's agenda. We can either have it be a, a business item, or we can even put it in consent, whatever that direction is, but certainly want some feedback from you on this.
Seth, is this just a one-time?
Thank you.
One-time payment?
No, I think generally would be expected to go on until future plans change. The resolution or the interlocal agreement, as you have, I think in your, in your materials, it does say that we give that to the county, and then they'll use it specifically for this. They've set aside a fund where that would go, and it would be under the direction of the, the commission and, and their administrator to disperse to the, to themselves or to these other agencies that are operating the warming centers. So right now, it's anticipated as a true interlocal agreement, which I think is a fifty-year type of an arrangement.
Where would our funds come from? As you see it right now, I'm sure you've kind of looked over the budget a little bit to see where we could pull, if we did this?
Yeah, we would, we would take it out of what we call our administrative fund, within the general fund. And there are adequate funds in, in there. We, we probably run that budget to within twenty thousand dollars of, at the end of the year, so if we added five thousand, we could, we could do that.
I think the part that I wanted to, to maybe have mentioned here and say thanks to Commissioner Gordon and leading this in, in the Utah County space, and just maybe assure the residents here. There's, and Seth can maybe speak more to this because he's, he's been involved in seeing legislation from the state of what, what, you know, what they're pushing communities to do, what they're pushing counties to do, to try to solve a, a problem that, that is not new, but, but is maybe getting worse in some places. And, and so I guess the, the kudos I'd like to give to the, the team at the county and communities in Utah County coming together, trying to do something is to do it different than maybe just Salt Lake County. And what we see not working in different places in, in Salt Lake is what we're gonna try to, to not do here. And I think, I think like Seth touched on there, the nonprofit game is pretty strong here, and their partnership is gonna be key to, to trying to help out with these issues.
Yeah, and I think when I first read the resolution, or sorry, the interlocal agreement, my, my quick math as I was reading it, like, whoa, another fifty thousand dollars. That's where I quickly did the math, and then I used a calculator and got the zeros right. And, and I highlight that because the fifty thousand dollars made more sense to me, like, this is what it's gonna cost in addition to what we're already contributing, and I was really happy at that, knowing our county's position, that we wanted to try this other route to see what we could do with, with volunteers and nonprofits. And it's a significantly different approach, as evidenced by not fifty, but five thousand dollars. And it may be more tomorrow. And one thing I think it's worth noting, that homelessness doesn't know any boundaries. And, and we don't necessarily know all the, the names or, or where they're from. We could actually find out at least where they come from, where they say they're coming from, that individual that's there, and, but we are, we're certain, in, in at least some of the conversations that Chief Johnson and I have had, that, that some of our residents might end up in those shelters, as, as the circumstances are. When we were there, there was a, a brother and a sister. They were probably in their forties. But they were, they had a car, and so they were kind of living out of their car, this brother and sister. Their circumstances of life are definitely not what they had planned, and, and wonderfully, gratefully, they have a car. But it was cold at night, and so they ended up in the shelters, and their, their car's parked right there, and they go into the shelter at night, and then they're doing their best to keep working and, and standing on their feet, but as homelessness doesn't know any boundary, I think we're grateful that, that as a community, Provo is, is leading in this. It's really easy for me to say that because it's not in Spanish Fork. But as I know our community, number one, there's a lot of heart here, but number two, we don't have services. We don't have, we don't have a lot of community, sorry, we don't have a lot of transit services, right? We don't have the, the network of nonprofits here, and so Community Action Services and a bunch of other great organizations that are there in Provo have really stepped up, and, and I'm, I'm very appreciative, and, and I admire very much how much Provo is leading in this. I know there's burdens that, that they feel because of this, and this is, this is a way I think we can, we can assist at least a little bit.
Thanks, Seth. Any other questions for Seth as we?
Is the county asking or hoping that each city in Utah County look at this agreement as well and, and approve it?
Yes.
Every, every city in the county?
Yeah, I did ask Commissioner Gordon if there was a desire or a hope that we would do something more than what they, the suggested amount. And he indicated no, that, that at least for now, the indicated amount is, they're, they're comfortable with. But they really, he did want to stress, however, that, that we push to our community members that opportunity to provide especially blankets. So if, if you have new and gently used and, and then washed blankets, to take them to Community Action, they can use them as many as they get.
So rather than the DI taking them to this place?
Yeah.
I think it's, it's interesting in the context that you described this for us, because you start with the donations and the, the nonprofit conversation about helping our community members. And, and we roll into this, and it feels like this is a continuation of that conversation, but I don't think that it is. It's, I believe this is a, a government's opportunity to take care of their citizens, not a donation.
Right.
It's not a charitable thing.
Correct.
It is a, a responsibility
Yeah.
for the community to take care of its own. And so I think it's, it's a little bit, in my mind, I'm trying to separate them in sort of context
Yeah.
of a donation that we citizens step up and do, and one that the, that our government helps with. And so I think from that perspective, I'm getting more comfortable with using taxpayer dollars on something like this because it is a service that we're going to provide our community like any other service that we provide. In this case, it's just, it's helping one of our sister cities provide, or county, provide a very much needed service to our community members, so. And then when you put it in context of, we will at some point, if not today, then at some point, we'll have a community member in this shelter.
Right.
And I think that for five thousand dollars a, a year, that's a pretty good investment for us to make into our community. So, you know, it's, at first, I'm like, ah, I'm struggling with tax dollars and donation.
It's not our role.
But it's, but yeah, but I want to move away from that and into the, what is our role, and our role is to provide for our community members, and this is a way for us to do it in a very, very efficient, cost-effective way, when pooling our resources as a, as a county.
I think that's a, that's a really good summation of, of the train of thought I've, I've had to go through as I've been around this topic for maybe the last two years. As the state sets the policy, they've clearly identified cities have a role in this, as evidenced by that funding mechanism that it's coming from our sales tax. So that's not the only source, but that is a major source for it. And they've said, this is as much your role as anybody else's city, so you've got a, you've got a stake in what, you know, how we do it. And I think this is, as you said, a very efficient way for us to say, all right, we're giving this globally, or, or they're taking it globally to the, to the efforts, but it's not quite enough to help specifically right here closer to home. And yeah, I think that's a journey I went through as well, and, and I, like I said, I kind of prepped myself for a larger number in, in the math. Turned out to be a different number.
I'm trying to keep the dollar amount separate, right, just from a philosophical standpoint. Should this be something we're doing, whatever the cost might be?
Yeah.
Five thousand's, at first, it's like, oh, five grand, are we talking about this really? But we should talk about the philosophical approach of this, I think. That's the important part in my mind. The dollar amount is, is a math equation, right? So I think that it's, it is responsible government to provide something like this to our citizens that need that help. And, and we do it in a variety of ways, right? We, we pool our resources together to provide snow plowing services or first responder services. We do that all the time to put, to provide education services for our community members. So I think this is, in that vein, makes more sense to me in my head if I keep, you know, like, thinking of it that way. So I'm supportive of it. I'd love to see it brought back for a, a, a dis- I'd love to see it brought back for a con- um a a discussion about approval.
Thank you. Any other questions or or, and then I'll ask you, do uh, I can bring it back, do you want to put it as as consent, you want to have some additional discussions, this same conversation again? Um, I'm not trying to presuppose what your position is, but but I also don't want to take time on something if you're comfortable you know, with it being there, so I'll take you some direction on where you'd like to see it, how you'd like to see it as well. I'm comfortable with with supporting this. I don't feel like there's more discussion, I think it's something that seems like we're all very supportive of.
Last night, we were uh getting ready to fly home from Orlando, took our family to Orlando. We had some time to kill before our flight left, and so we drove to a park in downtown Orlando. And me and my nine-year-old, my nine-year-old and I got out of the car and and just kind of walked around this park, just the two of us. And he was, it it was an eye-opening experience for him in downtown Orlando, a big city, to just see the homeless. And he got a little emotional.
Yeah.
It was, it was kind of fun to see, you know, sad to see, I guess. But just to see his his thought processes, he saw these homeless in this park and to look up at me and and ask if there was anything we could do.
Yeah.
And he's he's like, Dad, I want to help all of them. And, you know, a little, little heartbreaking to see that, and I I just thought to myself, it's one thing to be homeless in Orlando. Imagine being homeless in Salt Lake City or in Utah, right?
In January, yeah.
Thirty degrees colder. And so, yeah, anything, anything that we can do as a city to help those that are struggling, I think we should be be on board, absolutely.
Yeah. All right, thank you, uh, we'll we'll work with that. Uh, thinking back, maybe to procedure, it's interesting. We we do donations from time to time, we hold a public hearing, and then we put that on a donations list. This is an interlocal contract, an interlocal agreement with Utah County, and so it's a very specific appropriation even. Uh, you know, it's not a donation, but but you're buying a service, and that service is, you know, that unit of care, if you will, so.
I think that's the, to me, the
Yeah.
critical difference between
Yeah.
a donation and what this is. This is, we're paying for a service that the county is providing our citizens.
And I think our citizens are connected enough to know that that there's other communities up in Salt Lake County that are having pretty tough discussions of about this, right? Geographically, of where some centers are going and how that affects a community and an identity of a community, and and they're all trying to get to a a solution to to help and and do the right thing. Um, you know, again, our residents should know whether it, whether fortunate or unfortunate in circumstances, why something like that just doesn't work here is because the connectivity of it, not everybody the homeless, you know, has a car to to be able to get whatever job they're trying to do or or whatever. And uh, and so that's what not why, that's why we're not having a discussion about
A center here.
A center, where does it go?
Yeah.
But I think, I think we need to be cognizant of of your son needs to realize, well, this is how you, this is how you can help. You 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 can help by, you know, passing an initiative and an and an interlocal that that gets some funds to the right places.
Yeah, take him to that Just Serve site and say, this is something you can do. And tell him to get, go to his school and, you know, a really neat project, there was a kid that that found on the Just Serve site, you know, they they were looking for peanut butter, you know, whatever the issue was, and and he spent the entire year collecting peanut butter and and taking it to the place that needed it. It was really a an impactful experience for that particular kid, you know, that that may be something that you know, that if a nine-year-old shows up at my door and says, I'm trying to help the homeless, do you have any blankets? I'm I'm gonna say, where are you here? And I'm gonna go upstairs, downstairs, and find them all, right? And I think Dale and 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 Matt, Dale and Chief Johnson would, could tell you we've got from time to time homeless circumstances that we run across in different locations across our town. And and I don't know, it's certainly not today, but there will be a day, I think, in Spanish Fork's future where we're having that conversation about the population base and circumstances, at least warrant the conversation and and could it be here? Utah County's not, we're not there yet. Uh, but I I can imagine a day in in the future, maybe that's ten, fifteen, twenty years out, as our, as our whole population continues to grow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Seth.
Thank you, Seth, appreciate that. Thank you for that discussion, counsel, I think an important subject that uh will be back up in a in another meeting. Appreciate that information. Okay, any other uh discussion that needs to come up in front of this body before we adjourn? No closed session tonight, right?
I move that we adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Second by Councilman Euler to adjourn. Roll call vote, again, it's like I haven't ever done this before, but let's, let's do it. Uh, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you everybody for coming, appreciate it. Get better, Councilwoman Beck.